I'll clear the meeting open. I have apologies from councillor Hawkins, who may or may not be still stranded in Auckland, waiting for a flight next month.
Without a beer.
And also councillor Kelvett, who for possible early departure, depending on how disciplined or under the discipline we are, as she has a council-related meeting anchored before. So I'll move those apologies to be noted. Have a second please. Thank you councillor Lawson, those in favour?
Aye.
Yes, Carrie. I move for confirmation of the agenda. Have a second for that. Thank you councillor Zed. Any discussion? Pop that, those in favour?
Aye.
Yes, Carrie. Declaration of interest, just usual reminder, don't need to stand aside if you have a conflict of interest. And so we'll move on to Waikori Fund report for the quarter ending December 2013. All right, basically probably the best thing is really considering questions about how the funds perform. Equity markets have been positive for the quarter and it's actually performed reasonably well. Any questions?
I know it was down to us. With how the financials boil their equity markets, I think I'd hate to say.
Councillor Hawkins?
I've been to the grant and, sorry, chief financial trial over here. I just note that there's a dividend being paid of $2 million and that we're not quite, well, when we've entered in the 865, we've got a deficit of 30 million. Is that something that concerns you or is it just a pretty minor point of work?
My understanding is that the budget for the year that we're supposed to receive is about 3.4 million. So effectively we're slightly drawn ahead of that at this stage. So if you take that into consideration, we're actually very close. The bigger issue that there is with the fund though is that if you look at it, we're 2.8 million dollars behind inflation, which is the last number there, and that's been from a number of years. So we will have to build that up at some stage.
So I just question then, you say on 3.4 for the year, so we've actually paid over half already?
Yes.
Yep, so it's met on.
Close enough. Yeah. Thank you. Councillor McTavish?
Just wondering when we might be seeing a report about the teacher with four new submit options?
I don't know at the moment. I need to follow up with the CEO on which way we need to progress there. But my understanding, it will be part of the long-term plan, where I think all the financial policies are reviewed.
Rather than looking at it through the annual plan process?
Personally, I prefer the long-term plan because it actually gives me a bit more time to get around the whole council. But that's just a personal preference. If council wants it earlier, we'll go to try and achieve that.
Thank you.
Councillor McTavish, are you comfortable with that as an option? I'm just mindful of that leaves, it's like hanging in the air.
My preference would be for us to have a report which enabled us to make a decision in time for this annual plan, but I would take that up with the CEO of this. Please through.
All right, well, if, could I suggest that you do that, but if your, the outcome of that is that you have a desire to see it dealt with earlier, Paul, for me and I will go and see what might be possible.
Thanks. The only reason why it surprises me somewhat is that the responses I've had from the chief executive to date have been that we will be seeing a report, it's time for us to make a decision about whether or not we wish to include something in this annual plan. So obviously either that discussion hasn't happened or things have changed. So I'm just need to talk with the chief executive about that.
Councillor Anderson?
My preference would be that we don't ask for this report, given that we've got a chief financial officer who's still getting his feet under the table, only talking a matter of weeks so far. There's an extraordinary range of issues that he has to deal with, some of which will have very significant economic impacts for us. The report can only have very minor effects for us. I'm very happy that we get it later rather than soon.
Well, I'm just mindful of having confirmed the agenda, this wasn't on it, so I'm slightly reluctant to enter into a debate as to when or when it should have shouldn't. I think if we could be allowed to have a look at it outside of the meeting and see if we can work out the best way to meet everybody's needs, if that's possible.
Could I suggest, Mr Chair, that it could be addressed in item 7?
Yes, well, depending on the nature of discussions that are having. All right, any other questions with regard to Waikori Fund? Thank you. Well, there's no, anything for noting or anything, so we'll just move straight on to the financial report. Right. All right, I'll just make a couple of comments then I'll get Marie to take a look through the report. Couple of things, since I've started my role, that I want to start to look at for the financials, I just want to look at improving the reporting that we've got, one Hartson reporting we've got. So we're looking at particularly for the balance sheet, cash flow, that we're going to be having a monthly budget in there. That's actually going to make it more meaningful for the reports, for us to actually have a comment on them. We won't have to achieve that in this financial year because actually we're over halfway through it, and I'd rather that we spend energies doing it for 2014, 2015 and get robust outcome. So that's some things we're looking at. There will be changes to the reports, we're also looking at trying to make it, dare I say, easier to read and more graphical content as well, because people do see things in different lights. So apart from that, I'll then hand over to Marie to take a look at the report.
So you see, we've got an operating deficit of 2.5 million dollars after you've screwed the results for Waikori, which is 656,000 better than budgeted. There are three major drivers for that. The operating revenue, which is short by just over 3 million. A lot of that is down to grants from NZTA. We can't get the grants until the work's been done. Then an operating expenditure, we've got big favorable variances in interest, which is about 1.3, and depreciation, which is about 888,000. And putting together the report, we've done brief commentary about CAPEX, but not sufficient, I realise that. So what we've done is signal the capital expenditure that's indicated likely carry forwards at this stage, and then when we've gone on to the activities commentary, we've got some things in about capital expenditure in the various departments. There are two big drivers in the capital expenditure area, and it's transportation operations and the three waters. And so we've already touched on transportation operations and the link in with the grants. The three waters, a lot of that expenditure is underway, but it's going to take time for it to be captured and some of that may also be carried forward. Are there any questions?
Councillor Pegg?
Thank you. Just on, there's a lot to get your head around with this report, but just on 5.11, there's a report on rates and maybe appear somewhere else, but I was just wondering about that third bullet point, total rates for a bay. If I had the case in scrawled in the middle of my head, I'd figure, how does that compare with previous years? Is there a certain trend?
There is, and the trend is going down actually in terms of numbers, but the dollar's going up and that's often because the grant is slightly higher this year. We were putting in the comparative numbers and I'm not sure why it hasn't got in this time, but I'll make sure that it's in there for next times.
Councillor McTavish?
Thank you, Marie. There's a couple of instances, I think it's 22 in the West with a treatment plant out of Green Island that have flagged up electricity issues or certainly more than budgeted. Is there work going on around those to see whether there are ways in which we could offset those costs or is that simply a separate thing that we've worked on?
Through the Chair, I'm probably not the right person to be answering this. We are aware of it, we're aware that when it was budgeted, the programs were only, well the expenditure was only partway through and so they took best guess based on their best knowledge. We really need to get the energy people to have a look at that and it's, you know, we haven't got an energy manager, but we are covering that gap. So we will have a look at what the issues are and how they can be addressed.
Mary, page 5.16, City Fleet.
Just wanted to clarify from my understanding, I take it that at the moment, City Fleet charges other departments more than it costs, so the other departments' costs look higher than they would be if they were paying what it costs to run a vehicle. And City, I know it doesn't make any difference in the big picture, but is that the net effect of running for, aiming for a surplus in City Fleet, that the costs of other departments look artificially high?
To my knowledge, we have budgeted to make a profit in the year in the current year, but that will be changing in future years, so that they'll just be aiming to break even.
No, I appreciate that, but what I'm asking is, is that the effect of running at a surplus, that other departments which need vehicles, need to use vehicles, actually have higher costs than is really justified?
I'd say that probably is the situation. We are doing a review of our City Fleet charges overall, but the analyst who's doing it isn't here, otherwise I could have got some more complete information for you on that.
That's fine, thank you.
Councillor Anderson?
On page 5.9, coverage of interest rate sensitive debt by hedges. We've got debt ex Waikori fund. How's that generated?
I would have to get some assistance on this, councillor Anderson.
Okay, who am I?
I'm not sure, Grahan, do you have an suggestion? Michael probably could be the person that we would ask, but she's not here.
Also, you've got... Sorry, if I can help, if you turn to page 5.10, you'll see that down under public health, networks, management, waste, there was debt from Waikori Fund, that and I, my memory is that that is quite a longstanding line. Is that, you have the help, David?
Through the Chair. A few years ago, there was a view around the table that the Waikori Fund should be used for funding some expenditure and two loans were raised, internal loans, and that's the second one remaining. It's simply, Waikori is viewed as an investment, the rest of council or all the rest has used it as a loan.
So interest is paid by council to Waikori?
And when we do the accounts at council level, we contract out the income and expenditure, so it doesn't show up in the account.
Okay, so what was the loan called?
That would be my reflection, network management, some kind of piping, engineering.
And also, in the next section, we've got less interest rate protection. We've got your Waikori natural hedge, you've got your fixed rate funding. At the bottom, you've got fixed rate debt from other institutions, I take it that's banks, is it?
Then if you go over to 5.10, you've got the housing corporation of 473 and the National Bank, 25, the 25,000 through the National Bank. That was a, an elderly person's loan scam, which was put in place by the government probably 30 or 40 years ago. At some point, they sold it on to the National Bank, it was actually before there was some other bank. That's what's left, it should be completed by the end of the next program.
Good, so they're all relatively simple. Not now, but I'm thinking perhaps, the elephant in the room is the debt protected derivatives. Is there one single document which outlines the derivatives in terms of any ongoing risk or exposure? Is there a standard derivatives document that gives the terms and conditions on it? I have a few rate payers who are fairly consistently asking me questions about wanting more clarity on the derivatives. I wonder if there's something that...
Councillor Anderson, could I suggest, and you've slightly preempted, I've written down here, get a report, slightly followed our discussion of the other day, but there is, there is numerous...
Even a one pager, just...
I think if we could bring that back as items for the agenda, I'd be happy to support getting a report around just exactly what the derivatives mean in effect and what risks or lack of risk they create for council, because there is considerable conjecture out there in the community, a lot of it in my view completely misinformed, but nevertheless it would be helpful I think to have a look at it. And it also came up at the meeting that we had with members of the public pre-Christmas, so let's come back again to the meeting. Councillor McTavish?
Sorry, just have one more noted, and that is around the NZTA subsidies, covered up on 5.12. The fact that we are as yet unable to claim those is simply a timing issue, is it not? Once that work commences, we're still eligible for that.
That's right.
And, yeah, so it's likely to be claimed instead in the new year, in the new financial year.
Do you know if we might have a better idea of the timing of that work?
Through you, Chair, the, I think the peninsula might be carried forward. I think the strategic cycle, we're still working on it, so, yeah. But those are the two biggest subsidy questions.
And we claim that once the work commences or at its conclusion on it?
Each month, if there's some part we've done, we'll be claiming as we pay.
Councillor Anderson?
Sorry, just one last question on 5.16. It mentions an independent review of fleet charging of all the things. Who did the independent review and is it possible to see the terms of reference for it?
It's done by Prime Hallworth. I'm not sure, I doubt there is a problem with showing the terms of reference.
Right, if I could just perhaps have a look, thank you very much.
Councillor Wilson?
Through the Chair, I noticed on 5.11, the, this amount, accounts are receiving money owing for two months of war, 27% compared to 22%. Has there been any more thought about the credit card payment system or any other means of paying rates?
Yes, there has. Maybe if I put into context a little bit the numbers that are in there, so if we compare the results of December 2013 with 2012, 2013, the total debt for 2.18 million, and we had to come up with about 500,000 outstanding. At 2012, it was 2.5 million and we had about 500,000 outstanding. So that explains the difference in the percentages. There is a project underway at the moment, an online payments project, and that is to look at credit card options.
Councillor Lawson?
You know, I'm happy to move, but I just wonder also whether we have to note the first report as well, which I was happy to note that one as well.
Only because...
It wasn't resolution, I appreciate that.
There wasn't resolution, so...
I'll have to move, but we know both, if that makes it any easier.
Well, when we get to the end of questions, I'll have to do that. Are there any further questions? Then this is your moment.
Well, yeah, who? But let me know, but the motions would be that four and five, the both reports.
Be noted. Let us see them, please. Any discussion?
Just to come up to Chief Councillor. I think this is the first time that we've had this fuller report, particularly looking at all the financials in general and the financial review on page 12 and beyond, gives us so much more background information that helps to clarify where previously we just had a number that said that was either, you know, we were lagging behind with that project and a couple of comments. So it's appreciated having that more detail, so it certainly helps to clarify.
Thank you.
I was just, I was going to say the same thing, and I particularly appreciate having their heads up on potential carryforwards, because I don't think that we've had those in the past and it's nice to have them signal to really.
So councillors have taken the words out of my mouth. I think that the logical flow, the interpretability of this is improving all the time and I think if we can get the cash flow budgeting, it will be even better because I think one of the comments that I would make is that I think in the entire time I've been here, we have always been six months miles behind on capital expenditure. And of course, that affects things like depreciation, it affects things like interest, all sorts of things, so it makes it pretty difficult and I think it would be, you know, one, it happens once, that's just something, when it happens every year, you get to sort of wonder whether it's actually the budgeting sequencing that's out of phase rather than the spin, so I think that would help a lot as well. Thank you. No further comments, I'll put the motion. Those in favour?
Aye.
Yes, Carrie. Thank you. Move to entry charges.
Happy to move.
Rob McCamber?
Angle the second.
Obviously, the councillor, the councillor is wishing to move, I think if you have the opportunity, sit down first. Thank you. Before we open it up for questions, is there anything that either of you want to add to the report?
I think it's very subtle to that.
Thank you, well, we'll open it up for questions. I just, I have a question which I've been asked to ask on behalf of councillor Hawkins, who's detained in Auckland Airport, and so I'll do that, please, if I can. He says, why is the budget set down for only 50,000 cards and given our transient population, why aren't resident cards having a non-insignificant ongoing cost?
I guess that was, that was our best guess, is the short answer, based on what we know about our visitor demographic. Collectively, we thought that that was a, a very reasonable number of cards to want to budget for.
And his second question was, does Mr McCracken have any thoughts on the effect lower visitor numbers would have on negotiations with other galleries or philanthropists around getting international caliber artists on the Duff Public Art Gallery's walls and in its collections, or with attracting artists and resident for the visiting artist library?
That's a difficult question to answer. I know that we gain significant leverage by having such healthy visitor numbers with funders and with people that we're negotiating with to bring product into Dunedin.
Councillor Hall?
Have you got any more information about when other people have charged, how much they've charged? When you say that it's reduced visitor numbers on your best guess, charging people would, is part of the $5 question as it were? The second part of it is where people have tried the, how would you like to give us some money, $5 for example, how has that turned out to be for those people?
So could you just repeat the first question? You wanted to...
You've said, you've predicted a big drop in visitor numbers and is that based?
I've got a 60-page document, I don't know if you've had or not, which is the, which is the result of the visitor survey. And one of the, one of the things that we were really keen to do is to find the willingness to pay, the price point at which, at which people were most comfortable to pay without losing a lot of them. We went out with a proposition for $10 as a, as a starting point and the data came back that five was, was what people were more wanted to pay.
So you're, when you're predicting a drop in numbers, you're predicting that on the basis of five, but from the other things ahead? When this report was asked for, it says here you were asking only for non-residents. Was there a reason why we wouldn't be trying charging for everybody? I mean, like at the Mayan Call, we don't go in and say, well, don't pay anything for a swim, but do pay if you're from out of town?
Well, that's sort of, to answer to that question, the minute from, from the meeting that requested the report was quite specific about the fact that it was for non-residents, but I do have an answer for you. We did gather some information from Dunedin, potential non-users, we did a telephone survey as part of this, as part of this research and, and from memory, like I said, I should probably start flicking through, it will take too much time, I think $5 was their, was their price point where they were willing to, or what they saw as being there, because they weren't going to be asked to pay. That was from my source. That's from my source, that's correct. Thank you.
Councillor Zed?
Yes, I note that there has been a research done around this issue and that's good. However, I think, to me, the timing's wrong for this question, whether we should be charging or not. We are looking, the council's looking at having their own in-house marketing agency and I think that's a question that should be put to those that are looking at that. Now, I'm not sure who to ask the question of this, but I think it's, you know, that this, this issue of whether we charge or not should be put to that agency or people looking at that agency, because it has a direct relevance to the tourist industry and the numbers of visitors. Maybe the CEO, or perhaps if you feel inclined to ask a question, but do you think the timing's right for us to be looking at this issue, given that we're looking to go and do in-house marketing?
If I could maybe answer that in a roundabout way, I think the answers to whether this will work or not, or how we might do it, come down to, in many respects, the visitor market research that we've, that we've got, that we've done. We can look at, we can look at examples all over the place where it's either worked or it hasn't. And to me, you know, every market, every kind of cultural market is a little different. They have, they have a different visiting population or a different visiting proposition, weighted towards wealthy or more cost-effective backpacker-type travellers. So, I mean, yeah, it's a tough one, it's a tough one. I mean, the answer is yes or no.
Through the Chair, I could possibly add something to councillor Zed's comment. I think when the, when this research and the report was first requested, there was no, I suppose the idea of a different way of council doing its marketing wasn't, wasn't being considered at that time and that's partly why we headed down this track and the, I suppose the recent developments are a new, I suppose, new feature, that if it's council's wish, we can certainly consider referring it to that group for another look at it. But when we originally, I suppose, conceived and planned a research, that wasn't on the horizon. And the timing of the actual research was pitched so that the, it was at peak visitation, I think it was a period when we had a cruise ship in Dunedin every single day for the research period, so we could actually have a very sort of intense period of researching and that's just really the background. And that's just really the background to it, that we're happy to take direction from councillor on that point.
Councillor Staines.
Just looking at page 6.5, and you've got an indication that the first year, if we did adopt a charging system for non-residents, the first year would be a $3,000, $318,000 loss, and then the following year would be a positive contribution of $96,000. Does, does that then project that that would be the ongoing positive contribution in years three, four, five?
To the best of our, to the best of our knowledge. And we've, we've garnered that information, again, off the, of the numbers, of, I guess of data that we know. You know, we know what it's going to cost us, based on, on previous experience. And we have, we have a very good idea of what the market will pay, and how much of the market will pay. I think if I could just maybe make a little comment about that profit in year two, what I, what I haven't really mathematically been able to kind of quantify is the, is the impact of, you know, all of the cultural facilities in the city adopting the scheme. And that's one of the points I made in the summary. I think it's a, I think it's a, it's worth noting that, you know, if, if there is some pull from, from a free institution from the charging institutions, then we could see...
When you say free, you mean that we pay for it as right price?
Well, to, to, non-admission charge.
Thank you.
Then, then, then I think, you know, that circa $100,000 is, you know, is under threat and downward.
So, earlier in the day, we had, it was a prospect from Hainish Saxon that, in terms of the numbers of visitors dropped, there is an implication there for a KPI. So could you perhaps give us a feel for, is it, assuming that our residents who pay for these facilities have free and easy access? We're only talking about external visitors to the city?
Correct.
If you weren't measured on the number of people through the door as one of your KPIs, which I think all of our museums and the art gallery are, one of the KPIs is the number through the door. Does that change your view of it? What, what is the downside for the gallery if some of our non-resident visitors choose not to visit the gallery because it costs them five bucks?
The downsides are potentially financial. We, you know, our, our numbers go down, and I think it's a suggestion from the, from the research that it could be, in terms of, say, somewhere like Toyto, about 30, 35%, and for us, upwards of, getting up to the 40, 50%. So you're talking about half the visitors coming through, that's 100,000 people. I mean, we're potentially going to lose the grant income. We're, I mean, I guess it's the non, the non-financial costs. It's, it's the good news of having, you know, hundreds of people in the gallery at any time when you go and see it, the pride that, that people feed back to us on, you know, when they take visitors to the gallery to see it so well-used. I guess the pride that we felt when Toyto opened, and they had such, you know, massive visitor numbers, you know, going through. And the financial costs are, you know, lots of revenue in terms of visitor stars in the, in the shops, the retail.
But surely the case of Toyto, you've got to balance that off with a 40-something million investment by rate payers. You know, I, I just, you know, I, I know where you're coming from, but I just wonder about whether the business case is built to prove that it's not worthwhile on the basis that we lose numbers. It would have been nice in this report to have had which grants were dependent on foot tracking through. That would be a risk for us to understand what the financial impact outside is, because when I read this report, it suggests to me that $96,000 coming in that can be used for acquisitions in, in our, in our museums or art galleries, because at the moment, the only other funder is ourselves, might be attractive. So that's the only reason I asked the series of questions that I did.
Councillor McTavish.
And a couple of questions, just to follow up from councillor Staines's query. Our cultural institutions, we can measure success in a number of ways, and one of them is numbers, and you've made the case for grants and maybe potential impact on other partners and touring especially, if that goes drop. Has there been any measurement in other places that have done this around other measures of success and implications for things like the length of stay of any one visitor in, in institution if they pay for it, as opposed to if they haven't paid for it? Or the other example, I just wrote it down. The, the chief executive of tourists in Dunedin earlier on today raised the possibility of, if you sell a, a ticket which has entry to three or four different cultural institutions in the city, perhaps you'll extend the length of stay of any one person in Dunedin, and therefore there is benefit for multiple institutions. Did you come across any effects sort of in your research, or?
Not, not really. Funding bodies, you know, boards of directors are usually interested in, in, you know, the, the entry, as opposed to the, as opposed to the length of stay. I know we measure that on something like our, on our website, seeing if it pops into my head. We don't, I think, one of the things that became really clear to, I think, all of us involved in this report, was the fact that we, that we don't do enough visitor surveying. We don't understand, you know, we have, we have a very light, once-over-lightly understanding of our, of our audience. But, I mean, other than anecdotal, or if they, if they take time to fill out a survey about an exhibition that they've really liked, but I can't tell you that, you know, and I can't go to a funding agency and say, look, fund me because, you know, fund this show because people are going to stay here 20 minutes longer. It's not a conversation that we tend to hear.
Take your point. I guess the other question that I had was around what sort of, and I couldn't gauge it from the, you see, the summary, what degree of sensitivity there might have been to that five-dollar price? You know, if it was a $2 entry fee, would more non-local visitors have decided to take a plunge?
Yeah, that's a tough one. We didn't, I, I think it goes up, but the lower the, you know, the lower the, the proposed entry fee is, I think you get, you know, you get the hardcore who are, who are posing, you know, just a gold coin, or what have you. But then you've got, then you've got the cost to collect it, which I think becomes a factor, because that doesn't change. So in, in looking at the data, the $5 entry point gives you the most number of potential audience who are going to pay that, and, and makes it viable.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I've got a number of questions, sorry. But I did a quick survey for the Matilias in the last couple of days, and the general response I got was that sort of charge they were talking was 42% thought $5 was an appropriate figure, and 25% thought up around the $9 mark. You know, I keep hearing the $5 is the figure. Do you think that is a figure because it's an easy, quick number, or?
Sorry, just have to be with me.
Next one.
Here's a sample. I mean, you're gonna get, I think we can stay. That is dead, it's cool. You're getting, you're getting massive drop-off rates after $5. So there are people that are willing to pay six, there are people that are willing to pay seven, there are people who are willing to pay 20. There are very simple people. And again, the, the data just suggests that $5 is, after $5, that the, that the graph just dusted on it. That's the point, you know, there's a, we all know the price point where you're going to, you're going to make a decision whether you're going to, you're going to buy something or not. And, and once it goes over that margin, and for most people, $5. And I should say that, that the institutions are a little bit, it's $5 at the gallery, it's a little over $5 at Toyto, and a little over there at the Atagam Museum.
So when you're looking at the Mynon Pool, which is $6 an adult, $3 a child, and $13 a family, I sort of, I, I sort of struggle with the fact that you look at the Mynon Pool where everybody has to pay to have the privilege to swim, which could actually end up saving your life, versus, you know, going to an art gallery or Toyto, no matter how great the facilities are, and the investment that the city continually puts into, you know, 40 million into Toyto, and then we're talking about, you know, putting the pool out of Mosby, and saying, well, hang on, where are we looking? So in theory, I'm trying to work on the logic that you presented here, that we should not be charging anybody to go swimming.
It's a little outside the scope of my report. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not qualified to talk about the pool. I don't know what the funding model is in the pool, I don't know whether that's a, that's a subsidy, you know, whether that's the full cost of this one. I guess that's a, you know, that's an ideological, a logical question that all funding agencies have.
Okay. 320,000 visitors, visitors to Toyto, do we know roughly how many, what percentage of those were outside of Dunedin?
I guess we do. Well, based on, based again, based on, on the data that we gathered over the last, last little while, which forms the, the marketing, visitor marketing report, I've got non-residents at Toyto were like 67% in that time. It's really, it's really difficult to say. Toyto hasn't been opened long enough for us to, to gauge what, what their visitation's going to do and how it's going to be made up. Typically, when a new institution like that opens, you get, you get every man and his dog going to have a look at what their rates have been to be on. So, so their Dunedin visitation over, over the survey that we did was really high, as you would expect.
Yeah, a bit like what happened to Charlie's Gardens.
Exactly.
Yeah. So when I look at, say, 200,000 from outside of Dunedin, that's potentially $5 a year, we could have had a million-dollar revenue.
No, the two, I just, I just need to clarify, the 200,000 is the total visitation.
Now, just looking at 6.2, 6.2 on the background, second paragraph, 300,000 visitors, I've got an exemplary amount of them, first year operation since attracted over 340,000 visitors.
Sorry.
6.2, page 6.2, taking care of it.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's what it attracted last year. Looking forward, which I think is the exercise at hand, is trying to predict what's going to happen, they're, they're going to have a second year, which is not going to deliver, you know, in all likelihood, 320,000. I'd love it if it did, I think that'd be fantastic. But their KPI is 190 or 180, I think. I think that'll probably be about 200,000. So when we've tried to predict how much revenue, based on what we know about their visitors, how many of them would be required to pay? You know, we've come up with, with a figure of 361,000, based on, that's based on 200,000 people going through the door in total, something like 80,000 of those having to pay because they're outside Dunedin, and then paying by dollars.
You talked about potentially losing grant income and following councillor Staines and councillor Tavish. Is that a big portion of money, or is it, like, are you tied to the grant money? And I mean, external grant money, not the CCCE?
It's, it's, it's obviously all external grant money. It's, it's nice to have, it's not, you know, it's not a, it's not the end of the world. What I'm, what I'm trying to do is give you a very clear picture of what costs we might, you know, it's, it's not, it's not just collecting income. There will be some, there will be some costs, there's a direct cost, as well as some, some opportunity costs. You know, having 100,000 people as opposed to 200,000 people may negatively impact our ability to get creative museum funding. The gallery got in excess of $100,000 last financial year to augment our exhibition program. I'm suggesting that that might be a risk by a corresponding percentage, you know, that our visitation drops. Anyway, I think that's reasonable to assume.
Okay. And one final question, director of the museum. You still charge for Discovery World?
Hey, I'm, I can feel, I can feel that, in discussions with the museum, that, yeah, that the, the, the potential income that they might derive from this, because you note that they have been part of the, part of the research to allow, to allow that organization to, to have a look at it. It would be silly not to. The, the results of the, the results of the surveying, and if you extrapolate those out to dollar figures for the museum, I think, I think they don't, they don't, you know, that the loss of income, the loss of visitors is going to mean that their revenue generating activities, such as Discovery World, which they do charge for, their cafe, and their gift shop are going to, are going to take a hit in excess of what they might, they might generate out of revenue.
Okay, I, I just know where you went to go, because Discovery World, that was the key, that was how we target.
Through the chair, if I can just add a comment to, I have a footnote to councillor Wylie's question. As part of the research for this report, Cam and I did visit the CEO of the Taiga Museum. We had discussions around the, the results that we'd received from Parsons Research, and the CEO indicated that while it's certainly not a decision that has been taken to or made by the Taiga Museum Trust Board, certainly his view, if asked by the board, would be that he wouldn't favor the introduction of any entry charges for the Taiga Museum, principally because they already, as Cam indicated, generate in excess of 40% of their operating cost from revenue indicated, and that he felt that entry charges, which might reduce, the volume of visitation, might reduce that amount of revenue he's already collecting anyway. So his initial view certainly wasn't in favor of that. Can we incorporate that? Councillor Zed, Bernie has just answered my question. That's fine, that's a very good thing. Are there any other questions?
Sorry, you asked a question before, have we got your report? At the end of your report, on page 7, it says, "Report available on request from the director of Dunedin Public Art Gallery." I'm just wondering, is there any reason why that report isn't public? Has it got some sensitive information in it? Because I think it's one that if it could be put up online or emailed to us, that I'd like to bring it.
It's, it's, it's mine, I don't mean that there's nothing in there that's, that's sensitive, anyway. It's a 60-page document, and... It's a sixty-page document, and...
I don't want to, I more than happy to have it on email, I'm just wondering if we got the quote.
I'd be delighted to email to you.
All right, I'm conscious that there is a recommendation in the paper, but I'm conscious there's been various mutterings over here, so I'm not quite sure whether there is an alternative bloating around. Could I, just to understand how they might relate, could I ask what?
It's just an additional three, which Council Vandis is...
So it's...
Recommendations as per six point two plus Council of Exteris.
So it doesn't fundamentally differ from the recommendation that adds to it in that sense. So does, councillor Exteris, do you want to move in that direction? Or is it councillor Vandis, I'm not sure. Councillor Vandis? Or do I have a second for that? I'll open it up for discussion. Councillor Z? Sorry, councillor Handes, you were just speaking to her first.
Just very briefly, for me, the guts of that, and was highlighted by councillor Z, and Cam just now, if you look at page six point three, Atago Museum has indicated they don't favor any charges, already they collect approximately forty percent of this revenue from range of value-added activities. The guts of this report, which I'm very pleased with, I think is very clear, is that value-added activities is the way to go. If you want to destroy value-added activities, then putting a charge on the door is the way to do it. So the introduction of the missing charges is expected to reduce visitation and reduce that added value revenue. That's just the financial argument. There's a bigger argument that overrides just the whole thing. And that is, someone brought up the comparison of Moana Pool. If you look at what ratepayers' funds we put into sport in the city, it's vast. If you look at what ratepayers' funds we put into education, science, and art in the city, it's actually, by comparison, relatively small. And yet, your return from things like museums, from things like the art gallery, your return to our society, especially in the university city, comes back to you in so many different ways, financially and otherwise, if you support and quantify. The real strengths of the Dunedin, it's sports on the one hand, but it's culture and education facilities, I think much more on the other. And these institutions that we're talking about, that we're considering charging for here, they need to be able to grow their added value activities, and they need to grow the number of people going through them, just getting numbers through the door, because of value in itself, because of what those people take away in their minds, and what they then go on to do, the ideas and the inspiration they get from these places. Quite a different thing from Moana Pool.
Sorry, councillor Z?
The only addition that I'd open, and I agree with, in particular, the recommendation three, I think it supports that the new marketing agency has looked at it. But the other issue is, nowhere in the report does refer to private enterprise, and there are people who make a living from being associated with our institutions, like some restaurants and coffee bars and whatever alongside them. And if you reduce the numbers going through those institutions, you're also reducing the opportunity for people to make a living of those potential customers, if you like. So there is another element of loss that I don't believe is in the report. It looks in particular at the institutions themselves, but doesn't take into account the possible loss of visitors to our independent traders, if you like.
Councillor V.
Yeah, I think, I will support this because I just feel that councillor Wylie referred to the pool. When I go to other towns, I go to the cargo of questions, if I want to use the pool, I have to pay for it, if I want to use the museum, and in most cases I don't. I know there are some charges in some places. I'm actually ashamed to admit that I hadn't really been to the museum until I got elected and I decided I'd better see what it's all about, and the same with Toitoa. I've been absolutely amazed with both those things, I've had three trips through the art gallery while I've been waiting for meetings there. And I think, I don't know if Cam's support would entirely, if I would entirely agree with it, I think there are opportunities where you would lose revenue if you had to charge certain people, but in other ways you might gain revenue too. I'm not, I don't even think we'd wanna go there and have that debate, because I just feel that it's something that is well worth keeping free. Yeah, I guess you could have the debate about the pools and all sorts of things, but I think what we do should be reflected with other towns as well, and I just think we've got first-class facilities here. I think they do bring people to our city, and I think we should really support keeping them free where possible.
Councillor P.
Chairman, yeah, I thank the director and the group manager for this report, I swing right behind its intentions and the recommendations. We've had previous goes at charging for these facilities, and we've, you know, found the big barriers. I think the way to go is explained by these recommendations, is to look for, I think councillor Vandis was hinting at this, the value add, to charge for certain services. We don't charge people to go into our public libraries, but we do charge for certain services. We don't charge to go, well, it's not part of this discussion really, but it does charge for special exhibitions. The art gallery could do the same thing, for special services, for touring exhibitions that are of an international caliber and those sorts of things. I don't know whether Cam, we do it now, but we should be doing it for special events or exhibitions. We don't charge people to go into the Botanic Gardens. It is a cultural facility, it is the oldest, you know, garden, public garden in New Zealand, as is the art gallery, the oldest public art gallery. And you wouldn't wanna charge people for the Botanic Gardens either. So for all the philosophical and practical reasons as well, I support these recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Lawson.
This work, I think, came out as much to say is it fair and equitable that we compete with other institutions, and I think the prison, how the prison, the old prison maybe we developed, was in our thinking when we asked for this report. I think what has come out for me, and why I really like number three of this recommendation, is that the partnerships that we have to form across institutions are going to be those that make it pivotal, and will allow for things like the prison to develop. We have to look at how we can connect that to Toitoa, rather than trying to play them unevenly on an uneven playing field. And that, I think, is what will come out of this report. I hope it was a long way, an interesting way of going about it, and really appreciate all the work we've done with it, Cam, thank you.
Councillor Staines.
I'll reluctantly support the resolutions, but we have an issue in this city, and I think if you put the investment in the stadium to one side just right now, there isn't that big an imbalance between sporting activities and cultural activities in terms of our capital investment. And to buy an artwork these days that's of museum quality, well, you might get a less worth forty thousand dollars. If you wanna buy something significant, half a million, a million, sky's the limit really. We have one of the best collections in our art gallery. That is what actually makes our art gallery so good. But if we don't add to that collection, we don't think of the future and grow it, then we have a real problem. So my original support of this concept was to get a greater amount of money for the institutions in order to invest in their futures. At the moment, at best, they could be considered not-for-profits, and not profitable not-for-profits. And I think we've gotta get some focus on the third part of the resolution, and I think it's got to become a KPI of our institutions. How do we grow the revenue stream of the institutions in a way that enables those institutions to invest in their future, rather than just continuing to come to council to ask for money to put into a new acquisition? Now, Atago Museum has been lucky, it's had significant funds vested in it in the past. Those funds are being eroded a bit in more recent years, but there is still significant funding there to help in that regard. But I think we need to be conscious of it. If charging non-residents is not a goer, and I accept that it looks like it's too hard to do, we do need to find another solution.
Councillor V.
Yeah, a couple of things, in just picking up on councillor Staines's points, I think. Number two, I really support, and I seek support for it from the staff and institutions involved as well, and I think what this does is gives us an opportunity, and I'm happy to pick it up through community environment, to work on those and to report back to council on progress against those as soon as we can. So I look forward to working some on that. For me, I came to this six months, twelve months ago, I think now, when we first moved this from an equity perspective, and that's interesting, because I can see the arguments on the other side from the equity perspective as well. We have a significant number of visitors, as was highlighted by the chief executive of Dunedin this morning, who come into our city for a number of hours, they don't stay the night, they probably visit a couple of our cultural institutions and then they leave here. And it strikes me as perhaps a little inequitable that we provide those services completely free of charge, and the ratepayers foot the bill for all of that. That is the nature of the cruise ship market, but I'm not sure whether or not, I think there's more work for us to do around that and to look at how we can ensure that those cruise ship tourists are contributing directly, if possible, to supporting our institutions, as I'm sure that they're enjoying them like the rest of us. I like the idea of teach, charge for some of the added value type approaches. What I do note though is that these motions that we're moving here do absolutely nothing to deal with one of the issues which brought us to ask this to be looked at, and that is the Chinese garden issue. If we're remaining, if we're endorsing what we've got, we're endorsing the status quo, and I'm not sure that that's gonna solve any of the issues that we have around visitation and Chinese gardens. So flagging that, that might be something that we need to look at through community environment as well. I think if there is any merit, having read the report, if there is any merit in looking at this and listening to Amy this morning, it's in looking at the potential of a passport type approach for the city, or something that ensures that visitors are incentivized to stay longer in the city, to contribute before equivalently longer in terms of their visitation to multiple institutions that they may otherwise not have visited whilst they were here, to stay longer and spend more time with our mottelias and bennies and all of those other things. So that's why I suggested the third one, and that's why I think councillor Vandis, you know, I think the potential for the marketing agencies to take a broader look at it, rather than just from an institutional perspective, but to have a look at it from a city branding and marketing perspective. And it could be that they come to exactly the same conclusion, it could be that there's like a slightly different variation of the same, or it's not even the same thing, but a slightly different variation drawing on the outcomes of this report that might add that value and retain people here longer in the city. So I look forward to hearing what that entity has to say about it, once the up and running.
Me, Tom.
Probably gonna repeat a little bit of what others have said. I support these resolutions, although I think there was a very good reason all along for looking at ways to increase the revenue and look at equity issues. And frankly, to me, it's not important if visitors to the city decide not to go into one of our institutions because they don't wanna pay, they don't wear out the car, they're not paying now, if they don't come, they're not paying then. It's the secondary effect on our city and our institutions that I'd be concerned about. And Mr. McCracken has alluded to that, particularly with regard to what the effects might be in the museum. And so I accept that, and I think, but I think that there is, there are a couple of reasons that I think we particularly have to look at too. The first is the one that councillor Staines mentioned. I think, to be frank, I'd find it pretty difficult in the current financial situation to use, to try and justify using ratepayer money to buy, to acquire works for the art gallery, certainly at the moment, and certainly at the price they are. It would be pretty hard to justify to our community when we're dealing with other financial issues. The other issue is a little more subtle, and that is the effect of the ratepayer providing free entry to attractions, which are effectively competing with some others in the city. And the one that I would suggest is pertinent is Olverston. The city holds Olverston in trust, we expect it to pay for itself, and we give a very relatively small amount of money to help with that, but we expect it to crack even. And if visitors come to the city and they're tossing up where to go, they're naturally going to be attracted to free entry to institutions as opposed to someone they have to pay for. And as someone else mentioned, if the trust that's taken possession of the prison sets up there, they will have to charge in order to cover their costs. And so I'm concerned about the effect of having Toitoa over the road, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying I'm concerned about the effect of having Toitoa over the road, offering an extremely high-quality experience competing with someone else in the community of trust who's trying to do some really good work and preserve heritage building and enhance the offering. So I think for those reasons, it is really important that we pursue number two, and maybe we can find ways of addressing these issues that don't quite address some of the equity issues, but gain some more income to invest in the institutions themselves.
You haven't. Councillor W.
I agree with the last three councillors, Staines, McTavish, and Meerkau. Having spent quite a bit of time down at the cruise port and watching the passengers come through, there's a percentage that are out for the king of the freebies. That's all they're looking for in the city, is what's free, what they can do, before they hop back on the boat for lunchtime and say they're sending it in. And I find it really difficult when our ratepayers are looking at us time and time again to procreate income, to make it work, that we look after the people that are only here for the freebies. They also choose not to do some of the other great attractions we have, because they can do it for free. But in saying that, there's a lot of people that love to come to Dunedin, they really wanna see the sights. And I think, you know, often when I'm traveling, I look at what's free and what I have to pay for, and to be honest, if I have to pay for it, then I perceive it to be quality. And if you're not paying for it, then you treat it as being an average product. And I think that's also important, that people really understand they are gonna see something quality. The other thing is, we're not talking big dollars. You know, five dollars or ten dollars, or even past twenty dollars to see three properties, or whatever it may be. I'm not gonna go into the nitty-gritty of that. We are talking non-resident charge, we're not talking about residents, and that's why I bring up the Moana Pool issue. I'm really conscious that here we are, looking down that avenue, and saying, look, go swimming, we're gonna charge you, go to the art gallery, we're not gonna charge you when you're visiting. I'm not gonna support one, but I am gonna support two and three. Thank you.
If I can just add my five cents worth, I actually will support this, and my reasons are more around city brand. If this was a very large sum of money that we were being asked to forego, it might affect my view. But I'll give you an example of this, there's absolutely no earthly reason for anyone other than an Australian politician to go to Canberra, except the War Museum. And that's the only reason I went to Canberra. And I can't remember whether I had to pay or not, but the point is, I went there because other people told me how fantastic it was, and other people had to go in there first to be able to tell me how fantastic it was. And I think that we can undervalue the benefit or the importance from a PR perspective and a brand perspective of other people talking to other people. Now, that may well be people who have just popped in for the day on a cruise ship, but they talk to other people who may in fact decide to include Dunedin in their itinerary when they're actually traveling around the country on the basis of that feedback. And I don't know how you put a monetary value on it, but I suspect it's worth ninety thousand dollars a year at least, and that's what we're talking about here. So for those reasons... So for those reasons, I would certainly support these. Just before I give councillor Vandis' right reply, I understand that at least one councillor might wish to vote for one but not another, so I will put them as individual when I put them. Councillor Vandis, if you want to write a reply. I'm sorry, councillor.
Just briefly, because I'm sure the right reply will include another dose of the non-philistinism that we had from the mover when he made his initial contribution and I thank him for that. I think this has been a really interesting conversation actually, because I think the complexity of the issue has been properly canvassed and I'm certainly in support of the recommendations. I however, I'm less reticent to consider charging visitors in some means or other. I just think, as we have in this paper, that the practicalities of this are far outweighed by the downside. It sends to me that while this isn't on the agenda today and therefore can't be discussed, there should be a discussion, another discussion in a future day about how we can make people who are visitors to the city contribute more than they currently do, including the vex cruise ship visitor issue. And that may be by way of some dedicated tax on the accommodation industry, as works so successfully elsewhere in New Zealand and internationally. But I think these recommendations are good. I hope we call it Olveston, my Olveston house by the way, because I thought that was a new development in the report we had before us. But I think we've come to a great decision. Thank you.
Councillor Vandis, right reply.
When councillor Wiley suggested that there were tourists that would only be here for the freebies, I'm sure that there are some, but I would suggest that they'd be a very small number and that even those tourists that are only here for the freebies, those very small number of Australians, we refer to, that even they would be spending money on lunch, they would be spending money on transport, they would be spending money other ways, simply getting to and from these freebies that they're going to. Councillor Wiley suggested that you only pay for, you only recognise quality if you're paying for it. If you go to London, you go to the British Museum, you go to the National Gallery, these are the institutions that really adore you. They are the institutions that are the ultimate quality, they're actually beyond price. So therefore I absolutely reject the idea that you will only recognise quality in an institution if you pay for it. Mayor Cul said that effectively competing with other attractions in the city is a problematic problem and he mentioned Olveston and he does, I have to agree that there is a competition aspect to it. And one of the reasons we have a competition aspect to it is we tend to look upon our institutions as silos and we don't tend to really recognise that collectively, the institutions we pay for and the institutions that are freebies collectively create what councillor Thompson delightfully described as the city brand. Councillor Thompson, I believe, has hit the nail on the head. What we are doing here is creating a city brand that is worth far more than all of the individual bits and pieces that might come into it. The new approach to tourist promotion where we are pulling these various budgets together and trying to get an overall branding of the city, I think is a very positive step in this direction. And having some of our prior institutions as freebies and having a range of institutions that some are free and some that you have to charge for like Olveston completes a city brand, which, you know, the kind of tourists you really want to attract will, I believe, go and see all of these institutions if they get the chance and if they get to hear about them. Having some of them free means that, as someone else pointed out, I forget who now, more people will get to go and see them and will get to go and talk about them. And there's an absolute delight also in having the occasion of freebies. Every time I go to London, I go to the British. So I warmly recommend that you vote for all three recommendations, although they've been taken separately, and you'll vote for them because as councillor Thompson has very eloquently said, they are our city brand.
All right, I'm going to put one separately, I'll put two and three together because I haven't sensed that there was any desire to have those taken separately. I'll put number one, those in favour, number one against, carry. And two and three, those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Thank you, General.
I'll just make a comment that councillor Staines was talking about artworks that you could get, fairly indifferent artworks for $40,000, I'd be quite happy to do something that's a little bit easier.
But it might not be museums for us.
All right, thank you. We just moved to, to notification of agenda items for consideration by the chair, I've already had one notified which I have duly noted and we will deal with. Yeah, well, yes, all right, we'll treat the effort of investments as duly noted as well. Are there any others? There have been none, thank you, I can be very close.